Good afternoon, everyone. The July 8, 2025 meeting of the Seattle City Council will come to order. It is 2:03 PM. I'm Sarah Nelson, Council President. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Hollingsworth?
Here.
Councilmember Kettle?
Here.
Councilmember Rink?
Present.
Councilmember Rivera?
Present.
Councilmember Saka?
Here.
Councilmember Solomon?
Here.
Council President Nelson?
Present.
Seven present.
Thank you. All right, there are no presentations today, so colleagues at this time will open the hybrid public comment period. Public comment is limited to items on today's agenda, the introduction and referral calendar, and the council work program. Clerk coming, people are signed up today.
Five remotes.
Okay, we will start with the two in-person speakers, and we'll give everyone two minutes.
The public comment period will be moderated in the following manner. The public comment period is up to 20 minutes. Speakers will be called in the order in which they registered. Speakers will alternate between sets of in-person and remote speakers until the public comment period has ended. Please begin speaking by stating your name and the item that you are addressing. Speakers will hear a chime when 10 seconds are left of their time. Speakers' mics will be muted if they do not end their comments within the allotted time to allow us to call on the next speaker. The public comment period is now open, and we'll begin with the first speaker on the list.
We have Alex Zimmerman.
Yeah. Open timer. Yeah, okay. Zihail, my dirty damn Nazi Gestapo fascist pig, a bandita mafia and bandita. My name Alex Zimmerman. I speak in Council Chamber 5,000 times. I have 6,000 day of trespass, five times you prosecuted me, and 10 days ago you cut my statement for election. What has happened right now, what as I see here, because I live for 40 years, but 40 years I touch government every day, I want to speak about appointment of Seattle Etiquette and Election Commission by a government accountability. Guys, I'll be honest with you, you know what it means, I'm in court 100 times, and I have touched government for almost 40 years every day. We have a totally Nazi Gestapo fascist government. All three branches work absolutely identical, and for 40 years, I'm in court 100 times, and I've spoken in complaint, I cannot find one honest answer. For 40 years, system what is we have right now, this a nightmare, you know what it means, this more dangerous than a Gestapo or commie, you understand what it means for this, I have this slogan, "Stop Seattle fascist idiotic face." Guys, for 40 years, you make situation absolutely idiotic. It's a fascism, what has come from Seattle, go to King County, come to Washington, and you control this fascist for 40 years. I want to explain to you, no one fascism in Europe, in South America include, exists more than 40 years, but you exist more than 40 years. Why? Because of 750,000 idiots who are here in Seattle, brainwashed cockroaches, you know what it means, scared different opinion have. So right now, I speak to everybody who listen me, stand up, viv a Trump, viv a new American revolution, we need cleanse this, stopping this Nazi fascism. Thank you very much.
We have Bennett Houston, and then Andrew Olson.
Good afternoon, Council. So you might have heard the other five protesters besides me that were arrested for the sit-in protest in February 2024, that they dropped all charges again. So I wanted to revisit some statements that were made by the police at the time and about local conservative media about how this was characterized. So my arrest report, the Captain Steve Strand referred to this violent outburst that including the shouting and pounding on the large glass walls, that clearly has the effect of making the reader think that there was some danger of people like, you know, trying to do it in a threatening manner, or otherwise intimidate or create a reasonable fear of violence. So I, as you remember, had a GoPro on that was recording everything, and this is the only footage of what the person was doing, because the security footage inside the room is just pointing inside the room, and it doesn't have audio. So I'm gonna try and make this work again. So you can see the guy on the outside the window, he's just pounding his hand like that. Money for housing, not police. Okay, so he's clapping with his open palm on the glass window. Obviously, he doesn't think it's going to break. If he had broken it with his open palm, it would have slashed his hand open. If he, I mean, honestly, if he'd wanted to break the window, it would have been broken. There are chairs all out there. I mean, I think everything about the way that this event went down, you're allowed to say it was inconvenient. It was inconvenient for me, too. I was in jail until 2:00 AM. I mean, that's part of the point. You make sacrifices to show that you're serious. But I strongly disagree with any attempt to characterize this as violent or creating what a reasonable person would perceive as a risk of violence. People stood here chanting "Money for Housing, Not Police," the people who didn't want to get arrested filed out peacefully, the people who stayed behind got handcuffed and were escorted out of here. I think the truth matters, even a year later, I want to go on the record and correct this.
Andrew Olson, this is a... Guys, just checking, it was go time. Okay, anyways, I wanted to say, this should be easy, by the way, since we have no tantrum chanters in the room, like my friend here would say, the commish, commie fascist weirdos, or whatever. But I just wanted to say that communism does not work, and one other thing, very simple, Epstein didn't kill himself. Thank you.
Can I move on to remote public commenters?
Okay, we're not moving to our remote public comments, and the first speaker is Rose Legionnaires, to be followed by Courtney Holdhouse. As a reminder, please press star six when you hear the prompt that you have been unmuted. Go ahead, Rose.
Hello, my name is Rose. I think a lot of us know what it's like to feel grief. I had a friend of mine that just had passed away from terminal cancer. This week, I'm also experiencing a lot of grief in a lot of different senses. People across the nation are taken and ripped from their families every day. Some people in White City were taken, and there seems to be no response from the city council about why or what they planned to do to help these things not happen. Ironically, Seattle is far behind a lot of other cities in the area. Eugene Police Department last week had a protest of people at ICE facility, in which multiple times ICE called their local police, demanded that they go and take protesters away. The police showed up, knew that they shouldn't do anything, and left on multiple occasions. If you remember, as opposed to what SPD has done in the past, SPD has definitely shown up, taken people away, and helped ICE at multiple occasions despite our sanctuary laws. I think it is very clear that one of two things needs to happen. Either there needs to be a directive to have SPD follow the laws that are on the books, or rather, we need to have a law that makes it very clear of what is and is not allowed. I appreciate that the city council is addressing things like transportation today, but we have people who are feeling afraid that can't even leave their homes to get groceries. We can't do, have, we are doing transportation without caring about the people that can't even get there in the first place, then what are we doing? We're having people begging for $15,000 online so they don't get deported within 15 days, and the city is doing nothing about this. We need to show up for our neighbors. We need to be there for them. We need to show them that they matter. We need to show that every individual that is taken is someone that we care about because they are part of our community. I know that most people in the city council don't care, but you're overall, individually, you have a lower approval rating than Congress does collectively. This should matter to each of you, especially as election things go up, these people should matter to you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Courtney Holdhouse, to be followed by David Haynes. Please press stars.
Hello, my name is Courtney Holdhouse. I'm actually from Tumwater, but I'm speaking about an issue that affects full state, so I wanted to bring it up to the entire council here. I'm speaking here today because I've been ignored, retaliated against, and harmed by multiple public systems in this state, and now I'm escalating. I came forward about abuse from my former employer, the Washington State Department of Corrections. I raised concern about a hospital detaining me without valid consent. What I now know was medical kidnapping, that I can contribute to the retaliation. I reported police misconduct. I faced retaliation from Washington DOC. I have been denied protection, denied support, and labeled the problem, and medically misdiagnosed for speaking up. I didn't get help when I asked for crime victims assistance or unemployment, even though what I experienced is most certainly a crime, just many denials. Seattle says it cares about systemic abuse. Well then, please, help me access the resources I was denied, demand answers from the institutions that failed me. They are Washington State Department of Corrections, MultiCare Lacy Emergency, Providence St. Peters Hospital, and Tumwater Police Department. Thank you.
Next speaker is David Haynes, and then Alberto Alvarez.
Hi, David Haynes. Judging by the council and executive leadership that wants to claim public safety is an environmental issue, where if you can just change the environmental design, people won't be so criminal and backstabbing in their customs violating behaviors. If that's true, then you have to tear down all of Pioneer Square and Chinatown with all their cracked walls and unsafe buildings, and all of the historically preserved slum unsafe real estate, and redevelop it 21st century first world quality, where it embraces the resident-friendly pedestrian-centric neighborhood infrastructure with higher levels from the street for views of the mountains and the Puget Sound for better mental health and enjoyable livable amenity. Yet council landlords have been sabotaging the robust comprehensive plan and keeping it at the state bare minimum to cater favor to their supply and demand squeeze and speculations on the rental abuse of the market. We need, also, and a different subject, you know how we need to replace District 5? We need a council member who's willing to redevelop the Aurora corridor and tear down and rebuild something more qualitatively positive than all those slum pieces of real estate. And if y'all could like, get past your politricks and try to convince the federal government that they have to finance a lot of what we still need for the homeless crisis and the housing crisis, you all could somehow figure out a crime hotspot justification for federal investments, where you have the Army Corps of Engineers, the governor to deploy resources to tear down those slum pieces of real estate, and have the Army Corps of Engineers cut the footers for the foundations, and then turn it over to the carpenters union qualified workers to rapidly build some emergency hotel housing, and also have some authorized encampments stood up that have security on them for all the addicts that you need to send some police.
Next speaker is Alberto Alvarez.
Thank you. Rivera, a millionaire landlord who wanted to roll back ethics. Nelson, a millionaire business owner hurting port and freight operations, making that tariff pinch hurt even more. Council is also facing a severe economic downturn and a budget that will not match the needs of the people. Reduction in services and staffing will destabilize working families and elders on fixed income. People are making sacrifices just to keep a home and live on a shrinking budget. Council will have the job of appointing a District 5 member, unelected, and with the potential to cause immense damage in the year plus they will be in office. Councilmember Hollingsworth, Councilmember Rink, Councilmember Kettle, and Councilmember Strauss. The four of you are a fair representation of Seattle's left, right, and center. You must choose people over profit and housing stability over winter evictions. This appointment is a life and death decision for thousands of people. You have to get this one right. Thank you all, and have a good day.
There are no additional registered remote public commenters.
Thank you very much. The public comment period is now closed. If there is no objection, the introduction and referral calendar will be adopted. All right, hearing no objection, the introduction and referral calendar is adopted. I move to adopt the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda. Are there any comments? Councilmember Saka?
Thank you. I thank you, Madam Council President. I move to amend the agenda by removing item four and item five from the agenda.
Are there any comments?
Second.
Okay, I seconded. Okay, would you like to provide an explanation?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Council President. So colleagues, after hearing advice from our central staff and deputy city clerks, we are moving these two related agenda items to next week's full city council meeting. It is our understanding that there was a technical error and glitch related to the attachments in the underlying legislation that will still nonetheless need to be amended at full council. And I, so I appreciate that SDOT has recognized the technical errors and has been forthcoming in highlighting these, but given the timing, when we were notified of the error and the sensitive, and just being mindful and sensitive of central staff timing and workload constraints, we are moving this item to vote on next week. And in the meantime, our office will work closely with central staff and also the council president's office to ensure that this legislation is ready with the appropriate technical amendments and tweaks, errata if you will, finalized by next week. So ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Speaking for myself, I find that reasonable. Are there any comments? All right, seeing no further comments, does this require a vote, or can we just move on?
A vote, or if there's no objection, the amendment can be adopted.
Okay, seeing no objection, the agenda is amended.
The amendment is adopted. We just need to vote on the agenda as amended.
Okay. The amendment is adopted, and we will now vote on the agenda as amended. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Hollingsworth?
Yes.
Councilmember Kettle?
Aye.
Councilmember Rink?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Saka?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Council President Nelson?
Aye.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you very much. The agenda is amended. All right, we'll now consider the proposed consent calendar. The items on the consent calendar are the minutes of July 1, 2025, Council Bill 121024, payment to bills, five appointments from the Governance Accountability and Economic Development Committee, and two appointments from the Land Use Committee. Are there any items council members would like removed from today's consent calendar? Hearing none, I move to adopt the consent calendar. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the consent calendar. Will the Clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the consent calendar?
Councilmember Hollingsworth?
Yes.
Councilmember Kettle?
Aye.
Councilmember Rink?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Saka?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Council President Nelson?
Aye.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
The consent calendar items are adopted. Will the Clerk please affix my signature to the minutes in legislation on the consent calendar on my behalf? All right, moving on to committee reports. Will the Clerk please read item one into the record?
The report of the Finance, Native Communities, and Tribal Governments Committee, gen. item one, appointment 3189, appointment of Dan Eater as Director of City Budget Office for term to July 1, 2029. The committee recommends the appointment be confirmed.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Rivera, as vice chair of the committee, you're recognized and ordered to present the committee report.
Thank you, Council President Nelson. Colleagues, as vice chair of Finance, Native Communities, and Tribal Government Committee, and given Chair Strauss's excuse from today's meeting, I will be providing the committee report today for the confirmation of interim Director Eater's appointment as a director of the City Budget Office. The most recent Finance Committee voted to pass the confirmation and confirmed Director Eater as Director of the City Budget Office, and that is what I have to say in terms of the recommendation. There were, I will say, Director Eater responded to questions that were passed around to everyone, so that everyone should have his responses, even though you may not sit on the Finance Committee. And we're moving forward this for your consideration to move forward and approve. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you very much for that report. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, I'm not... Councilmember Kettle?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to take the opportunity to say that over the last 18 months, it's been a pleasure to work with Mr. Eater and his roles here, and to have frank conversations about the issues, the challenges that we face in city government. Each time that we've done so, he's done so with complete professionalism, and as we say, brought great credit upon himself and the administration. And with that, I just wanted to say thank you and express my support for his confirmation. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Eater.
Thank you. Councilmember Hollingsworth?
Thank you, Council President. Just to echo the words that Councilmember Kettle has said, had the honor and privilege of working with Director Eater, and always have found him to be very knowledgeable, factual in information, and also give a unique perspective about creative ideas to navigate certain challenges that we've had at the city. So looking forward to his appointment, and I will go on the record that you're my favorite Dan to work with. Shots fired.
It's a tall order. Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you, Council President. I too want to lend my voice here. I want to say to interim Director Eater that I really appreciate his responsiveness whenever my office has reached out on a question. It is really critical to the Legislative Department that the City Budget Office is responsive as we are working through the budget and other finance items that are under our purview to deliberate on and move on and move forward with. I do want to say, Director Eater, that I'm looking forward to working with you particularly as regards budgeting and this need to ensure that we are being accountable to the dollars that we steward on behalf of Seattle residents, and really wanting to make sure that we are doing a budget deep dive. And one thing that I have not seen that I think will be critical, and I am going to really look forward to working with you on, is ensuring that the services and the programs that the city administers are actually having their intended consequences. I have not seen yet from the executive the deep dive that I wanted to see in terms of are all the programs that we're administering actually having the intended consequence. It's really critical, colleagues, you all know this, as we are looking at the budget, to make sure that the services that we're providing are working for Seattle people. This is really an important piece, and one that I think the city of Seattle could do a much better job on in terms of making sure that those programs and services are working. And there's a myriad and laundry list of things that I think could stand improvement, and I am, like I said, looking forward to working with you, Director Eater, as we are very in short order going to be looking at next, at this following budget when we start deliberating in the fall once the executive sentences stand. So like I said, I really am looking forward to working with you and to your leadership. I know that you report to the executive, and it is critical for the budget director to work with the Legislative Department. We know the city works best when the executive and the city council are working together, and that includes on all things related to the budget as well. So thank you for wanting to take this on, and I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Looking for other hands? Councilmember Saka?
Thank you, Madam Council President, and I too want to just express my gratitude and appreciation for Director Eater, for his partnership and collaboration this past year plus now. As an aside, appreciate Councilmember Kettle's characterization, only a military man has that opening. I wrote a fair amount and received some of those commendations myself, reflecting great credit upon yourself and the executive. Councilmember Solomon, you know, you know, you get that opening, you know exactly where that's from. But it's good, and it's true. It's true. He's been a great partner. Director Eater's been a great partner, very collaborative. I appreciate your level of responsiveness to me and my office, and expect continued engagement on a going-forward basis in these challenging and uncertain budget times for our city. I think you are the right leader to help us navigate through these challenges. So honored to be able to support your nomination at full council today, and appreciate your continued collaboration. Thank you. And I also mentioned at our last committee meeting where we confirmed Director Eater's appointment at the committee level, I asked him a line of questioning, among other things, just, you know, about the roles and responsibilities and the unenviable position that he is in working directly and reporting directly to the mayor, but still having to, you know, work closely and communicate with, and essentially having a dotted line reporting relationship with every individual nine council members, and I was impressed by his responses there, and among other questions, probing questions that I asked him then. Director Eater, like, I asked that question not like I'm in a much better position, I have, we have over 800,000 residents, and my share of that is, I have, I have, what, 116,000 bosses, if you will, in District 1, and 680,000, I have a dotted line reporting relationship with another 680,000 Seattleites outside of District 1. So in any event, appreciate your answers and proud to be able to support your nomination today. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I, speaking for myself, but, and I'm going to pull a little bit of, not necessarily rank, but I'm going to show my age here, I can't think of anyone better for the job than interim director Dan Eater. I've known him for about 25 years or so, more or less, when he was a central staff analyst and I was a legislative assistant, and I can attest that he is not only super smart and conscientious, but he's got a meticulous attention to detail, and that's precisely what we need these days and always. I do want to just explain myself a little bit for the record, continue the conversation that we had a bit in briefing yesterday, because we were talking about the carry forward, and anybody that was watching the confirmation in the Finance Committee, I think that was last Wednesday, might have noticed a slight hesitation, and that's before the vote, and that's because I was thinking about mentioning or bringing up the carry forward legislation, which was transmitted months ago, that requests continuances for appropriations made in, I believe in 2024, that total about $169.2 million. And that, and with the latest payroll expense tax revenue forecast, that would leave us about $30 million in, you know, out of balance if we were just to adopt that legislation as is, and it's my understanding that Central Staff Director Noble has been asking for a revised piece of legislation so that we don't have to deal with any overages or underages going forward. And so, but that is what the conversation was about yesterday in briefings, when the question came up, why hasn't that legislation been transmitted? And I'm taking the opportunity to just basically express my faith that interim director Eater wants what is best for the city and what is best for all of the departments that deliver the services to our constituents. And so I, again, can't think of anybody but... And so I, again, can't think of anybody better for the job. I am also recognizing that, you know, he is, he's not able to do everything he wants. He works for an administration. And so that is the line between the executive and the legislative branches. And when he sat there at that table and said, "I've been where you are. I understand the legislative process," not where we are in office, but it's precisely because of Mr. Eater's knowledge of and understanding of the choices that we have to make come budget time that I really am welcoming that he's stepping up into this role. And I just have to say, thank you for taking on what is a shared burden. And I have, I have full confidence that this carry forward thing will get sorted out and that a long-term view of what are, of the city's financial stability going forward is at the center of interim director Eater's mind right now and will continue to serve the city to, in, to the greatest benefit of everybody. So I just appreciate you being willing to carry on the role as, you know, in a permanent position with this vote. And thank you very much for being a good partner because we're all in this together. So just wanted to mention that. Are there any further comments? Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll on the, on this bill?
Councilmember Hollingsworth?
Yes.
Councilmember Kettle?
Aye.
Councilmember Rink?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Saka?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Council President Nelson?
Aye.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you very much. The ayes have it and the appointment is confirmed. Congratulations, Director Eater. You're recognized to provide brief remarks if you would like to. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much that this on. Great. Thank you for the very nice words and ultimately for the vote of confidence. I look forward to continuing to work with you and support your decision-making in the months and years to come. Thank you to Mayor Harrell for nominating me to the Budget Director role. It's been my honor to support the mayor as he leads Seattle towards a sustainable financial future. And I'm happy to continue doing so in this role. Thank you to my incredibly hard-working team at the City Budget Office, some of whom have come today and are sitting in the back row and I appreciate it so much. I really appreciate their support, their smarts, and all of their hard work. And certainly not least, I want to thank my wife and three daughters, who are all currently out of state and unable to be here today. I rely on their love and support every day to be able to tackle this challenging professional role. In brief, I'm thrilled to be helping Seattle serve those who live, work, and visit here. We all know that the city's been grappling with revenue shortfalls and federal rollbacks that mean business as usual is no longer practical. So we'll need to find innovative ways to deliver critical municipal services. It also means we're considering some tax increases to help pay for those services. There will simply never be enough funding to pay for all the things we want to pay for. That can't and won't stop us from continuing to be a great city, a vibrant place, one that protects and helps its most vulnerable neighbors and one that treats its employees fairly. In the months and years ahead, I look forward to working with you all as the city makes decisions about how to prioritize and align our resources with a common goal of making Seattle an even better place. Thank you again.
Allow me the privilege of just commenting on your comments. The way you put, "There simply won't be enough money to cover," and I can't remember how you finished that sentence, but I think that you were getting at our shared values for the people of Seattle and what we're really trying to do in, as a city together, the executive, in one Seattle, Seattle. So thank you very much. Okay, moving on. Will the clerk please read the, read item two into the record?
Agenda item two, Council Bill 1200112, relating to the financing of the Seattle Social Housing Developer, authorizing Director of Finance to enter into a loan agreement with the Seattle Social Housing Developer, authorizing a loan of funds in an amount of up to $2 million from the General Fund as bridge financing to be repaid from future tax proceeds. The committee recommends the bill pass.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Rivera, as Vice Chair of the Committee, you're recognized to provide the Committee report.
All right. Thank you, Council President. And thank you to our city clerk for always basically beating us to the punch on what we're about to say. So thank you, Amelia. As Amelia said, basically, colleagues were voting today to approve the city's Director of Finance to enter into a loan agreement with the Social Housing Developer to authorize a loan of $2 million from the General Fund as bridge funding to be repaid once the tax proceeds are collected and transferred to the PDA as per voter approval initiative, approved initiative last fall. The bridge funding is critical to the continuation of the Social Housing PDA and will cover staffing and operational costs until the first proceeds are received in January of 2026. The committee recommends approval and passage of this legislation. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Are there any comments? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Councilmember Hollingsworth?
Yes.
Councilmember Kettle?
Aye.
Councilmember Rink?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Saka?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Council President Nelson?
Aye.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
The bill passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Will the clerk please, oh wait, is item three and four are removed, correct?
Just four and five.
Okay. Will the clerk please read item three into the record?
The report, the Transportation Committee, agenda item three, Council Bill 120989, relating to the Seattle Department of Transportation, authorizing Director of Transportation to execute and record a leasehold deed of trust reflecting Cultural Space Agency's leasehold estate rights created through the agreement if executed with the City of Seattle as authorized under ordinance 126916. The committee recommends the bill pass.
Thank you. Councilmember Saka, as Chair of the Committee, you are recognized to provide the Committee report.
Thank you, Madam Council President, and thank you, colleagues. This piece of, important piece of executive-driven legislation passed unanimously out of committee. And what it would do is it would authorize SDOT to execute a deed of trust that reflects the leasehold rights with respect to the Cultural Space Agency has in our historic King Street Station, which is in action at a higher level, non-contractual level, that was previously authorized by council back in 2023. So the Cultural Space Agency has granted a $485,000 grant. Was granted that grant by the Department of Commerce, State Department of Commerce, to support its operation in this space, provided the city provides this deed of trust. So this is enablement legislation to enable that. And excited to see this, as I know my colleagues are, to see that this historic building is better able to thrive and is in use and encouraging a yes vote on this fairly straightforward but important piece of legislation.
Thank you. Are there any comments about this piece of legislation? I'm looking, all right, not seeing any hands up. Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Councilmember Hollingsworth?
Yes.
Councilmember Kettle?
Aye.
Councilmember Rink?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Saka?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Council President Nelson?
Aye.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you very much. The bill passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? All right, there were no items removed from the consent calendar and there's not a resolution for introduction and adoption today. So colleagues, are there any further items of business to come before council?
Council President?
Councilmember Rink?
Thank you, Council President. As a follow-up from yesterday's briefing, I have a letter available for signatures today. May I proceed?
Yes.
Thank you. Colleagues, the letter, as we discussed during briefing yesterday, was written alongside state legislators Thomas and Scott, as well as Port Commissioner Hasagawa in the immediate aftermath of the passage of, as I like to call it, the big betrayal bill and was published on the Fourth of July. The letter highlights the impact of the bill from stripping away health care from 17 million Americans. Washingtonians stand to lose the largest share of their federal Medicaid dollars of any state in the Union to the tune of over $35 billion over the course of the next decade. And this is being done while also providing a dramatic increase to ICE's budget and agency actively disappearing our immigrant neighbors off our streets. The letter also includes a call to action and a commitment as the following, and I quote, "The undersigned elected officials represent all levels of government, including state, local, and special district governments. We commit to working together in the immediate term to develop meaningful solutions to protect residents. The time is urgently prudent for local leaders across Washington State to live up to the progressive values which have long made us a target of the Trump regime and their corporate cronies." End quote. And to date, we have signatures from 80 elected officials across 14 cities, port governments, school boards, county governments, and so on. And after initially circulating this letter on the holiday, we had to pause collecting signatures from Seattle City Council members to ensure OPMA best practices. Now that we're all together in a public meeting, I encourage anyone who wishes to add their signature to do so when the clerk calls the roll. For those of you who have already signed, please just state and affirm to confirm you want to remain a signatory. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Councilmember Kettle?
Thank you, Council President. I appreciate this, you know, looking at the breaking news that the Supreme Court has backed the effort to have massive cuts to the federal government. I did speak to the federal administration this morning and the Public Safety Committee, you know, highlighting emergency preparedness and the issues that come from that, you know, what we've seen in LA wildfires and now the floods in central Texas. And I noted that it was right to give the emergency declaration to Governor Abbott in Texas, but that we can't have FEMA, which is so important, not just to central Texas in this case, but to Seattle with respect to, you know, earthquakes and tsunamis and the work that comes out of these FEMA grants. But we can't have declarations and that kind of support become part of a new federal spoils system. It's a great concern that he can say yes to Governor Abbott in Texas, but he says no to Governor Inslee and Governor Ferguson in Washington State, when we had our own storm impact us here in the city, but really in the county to a great degree last fall. And so I've been speaking to these pieces and I've been highlighting some of the other public safety challenges that we have related to federal law enforcement. I'm saying all this that I'm not one to join on group letters. So I just wanted to say, I appreciate the effort. I appreciate the intent of this and to highlight my concern with federal administration actions, particularly in the area of public safety, but broadly as well because I've seen it directly and indirectly in so many ways. But at the same time, I'm not one to, you know, sign on letters like this. So with that, I respectfully decline to do so, but not against the intent, but just as a matter of fact, of how I do business. So thank you, Council President. Thank you, Councilmember Rink.
Thank you. Councilmember Rivera?
You're unmute.
You're muted, Councilmember Rivera.
Sorry. Thank you. I wanted to say, I did not actually receive this, my office did not receive this letter until yesterday afternoon and there's some questions I have about it, which I won't get into here. And I did reach out to our legal counsel about it. I too, like Councilmember Kettle, however, want to say that, I have said multiple times from the dais and will continue to say that the actions of the federal administration are absolutely abhorrent. They're disgusting. They're against the values of our country. And I continue to be, to say dismayed does not accurately portray what I'm feeling. And so I agree with the spirit of the letter and what I think the letter is trying to accomplish, though I'm not sure, and this is what I had some types of questions about. But, so I will not be signing, but I did not want it to left, I don't want it to be portrayed that my not signing somehow does not mean that I, of course, I am not in agreement with this federal administration and I am completely, you know, as you can tell, it's hard for me to formulate the words because I don't think they're strong enough words to, against what this administration is doing and all the horrible things that they're doing to people across the country, including with this bill, taking health care away from people. It is absolutely unacceptable. And the damage that this will create now and for years to come is absolutely unacceptable, including just the fact to be withholding services from people that taxpayer money is supposed to be going to, that is not coming back to the states in the way that it should, is absolutely offensive and it is just plain not okay. So Councilmember Rink, thank you for bringing this letter. I will not be signing. But like I said, I wanted to, for the record, state that I do not agree with this federal administration and I continue to be just, just, it is just gross and disgusting what's happening. And so, you know, I want to work with everyone to make sure that we are providing the best that we can to folks in Seattle and trying to do the best that we can as a city to continue to make this city a city where folks are protected and cared for at the end of the day. So thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Okay, I'm not seeing any, well, other hands? Nope. I will simply say, I completely understand and share the outrage or the spirit that I'm imagining drove the writing of this letter. It's, and we've all stated reasons why we're concerned about the impacts of federal actions on our constituents. And so normally I would jump on the opportunity to express that. I am concerned about a couple of things, though. The letter reads, "The most recent budget signed into law by Washington State Governor Bob Ferguson reduced childcare access for working families, made college less affordable, defunded pensions, closed reproductive healthcare clinic." All of that is, as I, is abhorrent. But I, I don't, I feel uncomfortable calling out the governor when this, when he signed legislation that came from, obviously, the legislature. So I did reach out to Office of Intergovernmental Relations Director Mina Hashemi to ask if she had been, if she was aware of this because it does, this letter does have the City of Seattle seal, not, and I don't even know if the Ledge Department has our own seal, but, and I haven't heard back from her, but I just feel as though I don't want to single out one person for a budget that was the product of months of negotiations. And then it also does call on local government leaders to enact progressive revenue like the Seattle Shield Initiative. I don't know if that is going to be before us, but we haven't approved it yet and I'm a little uncomfortable about asking other governments to do something that we haven't done yet. So for those two reasons, I'm not going to sign the letter, but I do want to express that I share in the spirit and the thoughts that are, that I believe are motivating the expression of this outrage. So just wanted to explain. So, just wanted to explain my reasoning. Are there any further comments? Go ahead.
Just offer some closing remarks, and thank you, colleagues, for your engagement on this. Again, the spirit of bringing this forward to full council today is to allow for anyone who would like to add their signature on and make sure that we're on compliance with OPMA. So, just wanted to bring it forward for anyone who wants to join in with 80 other elected officials across our state. Thank you.
Thank you. We can talk offline about logos or seals or whatever. Anyway, will the clerk please call the role on the names of people who would like to sign on to the letter?
Councilmember Hollingsworth?
Point a clarification. I apologize. If we've already signed on to it, our response?
Yes.
Is affirm, okay.
Just say, yeah, at this point, the yes or no, and yes meaning you've already added it or will be added.
Understood. Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Kettle?
No.
Councilmember Rink?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
No.
Councilmember Saka?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Council President Nelson?
No.
Four names will be added to the letter.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Is there any other business to come before council? All right. Seeing none, we've reached the end of today's agenda, and our next regularly scheduled city council meeting is on July 15th at 2:00 p.m. And hearing no further business, it is 2:54, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.